I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of School Commissioners for June 13th, 2023. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for all.
I think Betty has made a note of everybody who is present, which is only missing Kathy. So, great, thanks. I'd like to just read our board norms. Debate and commentary and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. And our focus is on students and our schools, not politics. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, okay. I'd also entertain a motion passes. I think I was supposed to say that.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Haven't done this in a really long time. Okay. I'd also entertain a motion to add two items to the consent agenda, and that is the Personnel Memo and/or the Addendum to the Personnel Memo and the Finance and Planning Committee Meeting Minutes from last week.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now I'd entertain a motion to actually pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks. I think we have just one person for public input.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for just, I'm just gonna give one minute. I asked Bill Olson and Mary Beth if I could give Rutland Ishidoya Student Exchange Update, which is the RISE program. As you may know, we have a sister city relationship with the city of Hanamaki, Japan. And on June 21st, my wife and I are chaperoning the six delegates to go to Japan this year. It's an honor and a thrill to be able to do that. A real fast itinerary. We fly, we leave Rutland High School at 1:00 a.m. on June 21st. We fly out of Montreal 7:30 a.m. You fly out of Montreal because you save about $1,200 a ticket.
Wow.
We don't get to Hanamaki until June 23rd. There's about 20 hours of travel. We actually rest in Narita for an evening, but our friends from Hanamaki are gonna meet us there, show us around Narita, see some shrines, and make sure we see that. We'll spend until June 29th in Hanamaki, visiting the mayor, some schools, the Ishidoya Friendship Association, and some other great folks there. And on the 29th of June, we'll head back to Tokyo where we have a fast, two nights and one day in Tokyo to take that in as much as we can. We've had a collaborative effort to form the itinerary for us, but our hosts take care of us once we're on the ground there. Then we'll be back on the ground in Montreal and then in Rutland by July 1. I want to let you know our students Cedar Handlin, McKenna McLaughlin, Indira Okendo, Phoenix Farr, Calvin Mitchell, and Kira McKean and their families have been working hard to earn everything that it takes to get to Hanamaki and back again. And we will host in October. Our friends are supposed to come and visit us October 26th through November 4th. When we do, we'll have a community event, we hope, and when we have that, you'll all be invited. I hope you come. Just want to let you know we'll be traveling soon, and thank you and all the community for the support. Oh, and at your, right in front of your little name tag, you have a button. And that's a little logo that we created here in the States, which we can't take to Japan because it's a copyright violation there. However, you can join them here in Rutland. And that little character is called Sobachi, and it's one of the characters they use to market tourism in the Owate Prefecture in Japan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't forget anybody else for public input. All right, I guess we'll move to the student representatives' reports.
Um, RIS celebrated our year end with a field day on Friday, a special shout-out to fresh guests for preparing and serving a tasty barbecue with all the fixings. It was a memorable day culminated by a showering of water from the Rutland City Fire Department. Today, we held Step Up Day at RIS where all students, including our second grade friends from Northeast and Northwest, were able to meet with their new teachers and classes. The year isn't over for us yet. We have a whole school assembly to look forward to, along with a school-wide craft and ice cream. RIS wishes everyone a safe and fun summer break. Northwest School ended the year with many wonderful events. We would like to thank the students and community for a wonderful year. We would like to wish the second grade students success as they move past Northwest. The summer will be busy with summer maintenance projects and over 100 students in our summer programs. Northeast has had many end-of-the-year and culminating and celebratory events over the past few weeks. To name a few, we have had the PAWS assemblies, had picnic with a book day, which involves many community readers, and even had a surprise visit from the Happy Cows Ice Cream Truck. Staff are also focusing on collecting and reporting, learning and progress, and they are creating meaningful and effective student transition plans in preparation for summer and upcoming school year.
At Rutland Middle School, yes plan was a huge success. Our students were engaged and our teachers created awesome creative mini-units. Some highlights were hands-on history, wilderness survival, jewelry making, CPR and first aid on the, and the road less traveled, where they wrote poetry throughout the woods of Rutland County. We began our end-of-the-year celebrations by bringing the whole school to Lake Dunmore for a long-day barbecue. Our students were respectful, polite, and had a blast. We are very grateful to our teachers who were able to be lifeguards for the day. We recently partnered with Rutland County Community Justice Center, who ran an essay contest based on the book Whirligeg by Paul Fleischerman. Four students worked closely with the Justice Center to facilitate the contest. Each earned $200 for their work. Five students earned prizes ranging from $500 to $25 for their essays. Rutland High School held its first annual spring fling on the last day of exams. Students enjoyed an ice cream truck, a cookout lunch, and a dunk tank, featuring members of the administrative and teaching staff. We were pleased to partner with Rutland Regional Medical Center and Partners for Prevention to host this event. Our first group of late risers are in Japan as we speak. This is the RISE group that was originally scheduled to attend in 2020, but we're unable to do so at the time. Students and chaperones have visited the Inari Shrine and met with Hiroshima survivor. We appreciate this group's patience and perseverance, and planning for the 2023 trip is well underway. Also, a group of students will be departing at the end of this week to visit Germany. They will be there from the 15th to the 29th of June. The trip will include visits to the Carl Benz Museum in Landenburg, weekend experiences with our host family, and a trip to Strasbourg. Of course, the big event is graduation for the grade class of 2023. It will be held on Thursday, June 15th at 6:00 p.m. at Spartan Arena. All board members are invited to attend. Rutland High School also say, I'd like to say a great thanks to the staff at Killington Adventure Park for a great senior day today with the senior class. At Allen Street Campus, classes have been busy working on our guest plans. Last week, the student worked with a resident artist planning and painted a huge full-wall mural in our skateboard room. The artist was a sponsored skater that ripped up the mini-pipe for the kids and will be providing additional experiences this fall around art and skating. Currently, students are hanging sound panels and wrapping up loose ends in the skate room. The experimental learning class has researched, plotted, tilled, installed drip irrigation, and planted a pumpkin patch on Allen Street with grant funds. Our school, our goal is to provide a pumpkin picking experience on campus and food for every kindergartner this fall. We would like to thank our Maintenance Department, Vermont Adaptive, Chill Foundation, Social Tinkering, OVX, Vermont Public Health Institute, Administration, the Board of Education, and our community for, community partners for your support. We look forward to building on these collaborative relationships to provide access, tools for growth, and avenues for revenue. At Stafford Technical Center, on June 2nd, they held their annual end-of-the-year award ceremony. Cam Slanker, RHS, and Stafford Class of 2017 was the keynote speaker and shared how his time in the engineering and auto technology programs at Stafford shaped his current career as a mechanical design engineer with Heizon Motors, where he is helping design hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. Seventy-one seniors were recognized during the award ceremony and have earned during their time at Stafford 389 college credits, 570 industry-recognized credentials, and just over 13,500 in scholarships. Eleven health career students sat for their Vermont State Board License, Nursing Assistant License recently, and we are pleased to report a 100% pass rate. Yesterday, our second-year cosmetology, cosmetology students sat for their State Board Practical Exam, and we are anxiously awaiting their results.
Yay. Great, thank you both very much. I think we wanted to certainly at this point recognize outgoing student representative Lauren Salamano. Can I actually turn it over?
Well, I'll just say, Lauren, thank you for all, all the work that you've done for the past two years. I know that you're, you're here most of the meetings, and you also have all the other obligations to take care of, especially with your athletics. And so you have a big full schedule, and you made time to serve the, the school and the district, so thank you for that. And I know there's a lot of work that you did back at the school, involved with connecting this board to what's, what was happening at school. So I think you did a great job, and we really appreciate all your service, and so I think we have some gifts for you. We have, first of all, you can't go wrong with this. And then we have a nice plaque, and, oh, am I, there I am. Also, I have a gift for you from the board.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lauren. I think I speak for all of my fellow commissioners when I say I'm extremely grateful for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right. So now I'd like to welcome Greg Schillinger up to welcome our new student representative, Amaya Tonda. Tonda? Tonda, thank you, Tonda. Who I met at the Equity Forum, right?
I promised Amaya she wouldn't have to speak tonight. I am pleased to introduce Amaya Tonda to the board, to introduce Amaya to the board as the student representative. Amaya is a graduate of Rutland Middles and Intermediate Schools and a rising Rutland High School junior. She has been a member of the soccer and basketball teams for the past two years. Importantly, she is a founding member of the new student organization, Justice for All, which quote, "strives to create and preserve a climate in which everyone is accepted and appreciated for who they are." This organization has presented to the State Board of Ed, completed multiple applications to fly flags for different affinity groups, and will be presenting to the faculty next week. It has been a pleasure to work with Amaya and her classmates these past two years in this capacity. She has also served as a member of the Student Senate, and this past year she ran for and was elected to the position of Student Board Representative. In her application, she wrote in part, "Through my career in Rutland City Public School Systems, I have seen highs and lows, and I have wanted to be a significant part of the change in some way to attempt to provide helpful ideas and commentary." To the members of the Board of School Commissioners, I am pleased to present your newest member, Amaya Tonda. Do you like this? Welcome, Amaya.
Welcome.
I need to tell you, most of us come to these meetings hoping we don't have to speak.
Thank you. Great, thank you for being willing to serve. Thank you. All right. Marie Gilman, would you like to come forward and talk about our Tapestry and Epic Report?
Thank you for having me. Yay, you did it. So again, thank you for having me back. Try to give you an overview of what's been going on, what the year has looked like, and what summer is looking like, and it's very hectic right now because we're getting ready for all of this to launch as soon as basically school is over. So last year I came and talked to you about Tapestry at Epic I Camp. We still wholeheartedly believe that and embody that, but now I'm also gonna ask you to imagine the possibilities. We've come a long way, and not just because of COVID, but we've seen a lot of change in our programs, and we're going to see more. And our goal, our, our purpose, I should say, is to, as it says there, create opportunities through high-quality enrichment offerings during the school year and summer. If you think about it, we have the kids. We have their time. We have their attention. We can do even more with them. So that's what we're trying to suggest, provide opportunity for in our programs with our very passionate, very committed staff. And why do we do this? Well, you know this, but for those of you that haven't heard me before, I'll over-sung it again. We provide building blocks that kids need to succeed in life and school. We're not the only ones. We're not taking all the credit for that, but we're an important part of that. And if you think about these blocks as they're going up and you read these, you might be struck by how much they align with our new portrait of a graduate. Yeah, that's how it should be. And now I'm gonna put a backdrop to this all that I've been sharing with people, anyone that will listen. We have the kids, K to 12. We have a lot of time with them and a lot of opportunity to build fabulous, amazing memories, skills, and characters. They come in all sizes and shapes. So how do we do what we do? Well, it takes money. It takes talent. It takes time, commitment, and support from all of you, from all of the administration, and all of our very passionate staff, and the kids. We have a budget coming this next year that's getting back on track to where it had been of about $1.37 million. And what is that support in two or three years, being at full operation again? 100 employees serving 700 kits. That resume for a moment. And I have a chart that supports all of that. Our successes this year, we've been very, very busy, not that we weren't in the last couple of years. But at Epic, we have two different grants, just to remind you. We have the 21C Grant for Epic, and that is the only funding for that program, other than that we are housed in the schools and supported by the schools in terms of, you know, the schools have maintenance crews and whatnot, and so we benefit from that as well. We are a part of the schools. We're not a separate organization. But under that grant, we had our monitoring site visit this year, which means the state comes down, some peers come in, they take a look at our program for a day or more, and they meet with superintendent, assistant superintendent, staff, whoever they can get in touch with, we can bring to the table. We had some students talk to them, and they were very articulate and really had a lot to share. So these are the types of things that the reviewers walked away with. They were very impressed with our programs. They saw absolute value in our programs. They see possibilities for future success, expansion, you know, deepening of programming. And so we're all inspired by that, and now we have work to do to make sure we do all of that, because we'll have to go back in for our Epic 21st Century Grant in two years, well, a year and a half now. Time is passing. In terms of Tapestry, things changed this year. We had to reapply for our five-year grant. This was the time that we had to do that. That was due back in early February. We did so without the Greater Rutland County, or Greater Rutland, yeah, County Supervisory Schools. So we are now only Rutland City Schools-focused. I'm really excited about that, and it's working out really to our advantage. At the same time, ironically, I'll call it ironically, a little strategically, we were able to apply for and get an award of $1.8 million over five years, which is an increase of nearly 50%.
Wow.
Over what we've been getting. So that's really helpful. Helps us breathe a little bit easier. So thinking of Tapestry and Epic, these things apply, but what will we do with that money and all the other funds that we bring in from childcare subsidy and private pay? This doesn't seem to be working the way I had hoped. You've seen this chart before, but what I wanted to point out is that all of these with the checkmarks on them, we have, we do, pretty well. The things we'll be focusing on in the next few years, especially starting this year because of the Tapestry Grant, are really strongly linking to the school day, making sure that we have high-interest programming, and I'm gonna put a caveat on that, that that is student-driven, student-informed. It always has been, but even more intentionally going forward, and I'll give you an example of that. And strong instructional leadership, so bringing teachers back into the fold strategically so that they can provide even higher-level components and elements to our programs than we have today. So the goals, as outlined in that five-year grant, are what's on the board here in high level, student-driven programming. Well, what does that mean? Well, we're actually, we've already started professional development for our staff about how to cultivate that. It sounds easy. It's not as easy as it should be, instinctive and naturally, but, you know, really providing the opportunities, really listening more than you're talking, hearing what the kids are doing. What did that translate into already this year? The middle school Epic Program after-school kids between March and May designed the summer program. Cool. We have close to 50 kids enrolled this year, probably because of that. And that's what we're looking to do going forward, is having students basically wanting to come to our program and inviting their friends to come too. So whether or not childcare is part of that, that's fine, but that's not going to be our purpose, sole purpose. We intend to, five years from now, have engaged 50% of the K to 4 population on a regular basis. That's really our target audience for Tapestry, making sure we're getting at those kids. We can do that. We will also be successful with the fifth and sixth graders, but we want to focus on the younger kids to start out. And again, making sure that that is aligned with what's going on with the school day and testing that by looking at data. We've been doing that this past year. We'll do it again, so we have benchmarks now for most everything, and we'll continue doing that into the future. Continuously improved quality programming. Two comments here. Participants will demonstrate new learning. Participants will self-report that they learned something new. Those are not one in the same. They should go together, but they don't always, so we're gonna measure both to make sure that what we're providing the kids is providing something they're interested in, they're learning something from that, and that they recognize they're learning something from it as well. And last, but certainly not least, it is our goal to reopen Tapestry at Northeast Primary School. Hopefully, our target is by January 1 of 2024. If we can do it sooner, we will. It all comes down to staffing, which you've heard me talk about for two years now. This is just a pretty image to show all the kinds of things that we play with and, you know, bring to the table and will continue to and build upon for address, like students have been absent or truant. And why do we succeed? We succeed because our focus is the relationships. Staff to child, child to staff, child to child, staff to staff, all the way around. Safely making sure that kids have an opportunity and a safe space that they can feel they can grow, they can develop, they can hone skills, they can gain new skills, and we do that by providing quality programming. And our goal is ultimately in this category to have the best after-school program in Vermont. No question. We want to be known for that. So that's what we're working on. And our summer program, you remember the circus last year? We don't have the circus this year. Repeat every year. Change it up every year. So site by site, things are a little bit different, but we also overlay a bunch of things to make sure that kids at any age have access to similar or the same things. What is our wow factor this year? We have husbandry with both horses and rabbits. Wow. Who'd have thought? So the RIS kids are gonna have an opportunity to learn about horses, care for horses, ride horses. And kids K through 6, at least, maybe the middle school, I can't remember right now, will have an opportunity to do the same with rabbits. And yes, they may be able to bring them home and foster them for a little while. So, yet not at my house. We also have introduced some, you know, new fun things. The littlest kids will go over to the Magic Forest, found a pinball arcade and museum. Who'd know? Who knew? And last year, we had a barbecue. This year, we're gonna have family barbecues at each site so that we can bring people together again. That's been really successful in so many different arenas, so we will do the same. And then all the other things down below, similar to things you've heard before, but we may even have a theater production I learned this afternoon before I came over here. So when you think about this, keep in mind again, because I'm just so tickled, the middle school kids design their own program this summer. What is the focus of their program? Don't ever guess. History of presidents. They picked where they wanted to go, what sites count, Coolidge, places like that. And yeah, it'll be really fun. They'll be really proud of what they did, and it should be very successful. So I have very, I didn't know those people. I was like...
That was great.
Yeah, that's awesome. I mean, too.
Yeah, it's a great program, what you're doing. I'm just trying to understand, what is the structure you have behind, for example, as our funds, we have a committee that helps make decisions and manage the funds. What is, how many people do you have in your department that are working with managing, making sure everything's being spent on appropriately and just managing the amount of money that you're talking about getting for the next five years? I'm just curious, what does that structure look like?
Well, I work really closely with Rob and with the business office. We also have an advisory committee. More people, including a parent. I'm looking to expand that with even more parents, hopefully. But it's also very much prescribed by federal rules, so, and I've worked with that for 20 years, so it's, yeah, pretty set.
Like, what, how many, what number of people are we talking about that are involved? Five or 10?
Well, Rob, me.
Curious.
Ten, in total. Looking at the budget, looking at what expenses are. Of course, expenses all go through the same, also they do for the district, which was part of the district, so.
Yeah, so it sounds, so you have help.
Right.
In making sure that you're doing what you need to do with that.
Absolutely.
Making it go as far as possible. Great.
We're pretty fruitful, Tim, and creative, so.
Great.
You actually touched on the question that I had been thinking about, the vacancies. I remember last year that was a big thing. You still have them, but would you say that the vacancies are less and that you're, you're kind of starting to build up your staff, or?
We're cautiously optimistic that things are starting to turn. We are actually overstaffed for summer, to be honest with you, but we've done that in hopes that some of those folks, and some of those folks have expressed to us that they'd like to work into the school year next year. So this is a good proving ground and learning ground for them. I'm nervous about fall, but I'm more hopeful by far than I was sitting here this time last year.
That's awesome.
Congratulations on being overstaffed.
Yeah, that's accomplished.
That's not a normal, super-high-caliber staff this summer, so.
That's excellent.
That's great.
Yeah, from all over the county, not just the district. So I'm really excited. So it's gonna work. And the high school program, just to emphasize that, was very successful this year with Carol Baker coming on as the new site coordinator up there. And they had new programming up there that the kids built and really believed in, and they, they proved it, it worked. And this summer, they have two camps right now that are building, and I think we'll wanna do the same thing, sign up. Steel Drum Camp. Steel Drum Camp, where they're going to talk about Caribbean culture, Caribbean foods, as well as the music, and learn how to play the music, and Theater Camp. So, yeah, things are much brighter than they were six, nine, 12 months ago. And we hope they keep going. We're planning for them to go that way because it won't happen just by hoping.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I guess one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this extra money, focusing on the extra money. So the extra money, I'm thinking, what are you going to say? What, what would you do with that? Is that just to supplement what you're doing, or do you have special plans for what this money is going to be in, separate from what you normally do?
A little bit of both, to be honest with you. There were some positions haven't been... Our Tapestry folks haven't been given a raise in five years, for the most part. I have been able to eke some out over the last couple of years, but we really need to change that structure and have ongoing increases, so that's part of the build-in. We have been working on and through the beginnings of a continuous quality improvement initiative, which, by the way, is really happily an accident because the state just released a couple days or a week ago, I guess, their new requirements for being recognized as a five-star program. And it's, it's completely grounded in continuous quality improvement. So that all takes more effort, more work. And we'll need more professional development. We'll need to have people go visit other programs so that they can see what other folks are doing, those kinds of things. So there will be some different expenses that we haven't even had before.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Where's that pinball arcade and museum you're going to?
Yeah.
Okay, let me know.
Yeah.
That's one of the days I might just have to pencil into.
Yeah, you might have to go to that.
That's awesome.
Come see us. We're happy.
All right.
Thank you.
Marie, thank you so much. All right, the wonderful Patricia Agner, would you like to join us?
Hi.
Hi. Just watch the video again.
We'll do it again. That's great music. I think you hit the three dots, maybe?
I was just going to say that.
So I'm Patricia Agner. I serve as your Director of Technology in the school system. And Dan, this is my colleague, Dan Roswell. I'm going to introduce you.
Yep, I'm Dan Roswell. I'm the Senior Network Administrator here.
So we were just saying, we've worked together for 12 years in the district. It's been a while. When we started out, we had a meeting and we were just saying, when we started out, we had carts, we had two Chromebook carts or two computer carts, they were called COWs. And the wireless access point sat on top and the COWs held.
Oh, my gosh.
We're going to, we're going to share with you how things have changed in the district. So, and we're going to go over some of the big ideas around technology. Dan's going to start out talking about infrastructure and share with you some things that are kind of interesting about schools.
So we've continued to upgrade our internal and external network infrastructure for better reliability and performance over the past few years. Equipment was pretty difficult to procure throughout the pandemic, but we're in the process now of upgrading all of our wireless and our servers and storage. Rutland Schools have also made the authentication process easier for kids and staff to sign in while maintaining security. And we've also been deploying large-scale screens that are working a lot better than the old projectors. And we've continued with our one-to-one Chromebook program and maintain our existing lab count for computers and employee machines. Over the next couple of years, we're going to be working to refresh a large portion of our server, storage, and networks. We're using a combination of federal grants and funding to minimize our impact to the local budgets. Our team is working hand-in-hand with our maintenance departments as well to provide displays in classrooms, and we've added software and training to our cybersecurity posture. One of the things that came up in our cybersecurity questionnaire this year was our provider, insurance provider has identified schools as a premier target for hackers and bad actors. So the tools and equipment we're using constantly, they're changing, and we've been implementing algorithms and machine learning to detect, prevent, and remediate attacks in real time. So threat store system and the data here at Rutland Schools increase every year, but we're working to keep the ecosystem secure.
You know, one thing that's kind of interesting about that, too, is that in addition to the work that Dan's doing, we're doing a lot of professional development with our employees so that they're better able to detect threats to the system. So it's very helpful. So think about our schools. I'm going to start out looking at 22. So we've been investing in touch Chromebooks with our youngest kids. And I was talking to someone and they said, "What a novel idea." I said, "No, it's not a novel idea. They can't read." So, so that's a place where we've had some good success. And we're looking at doing some different things this year with a product called Clever so that it's easier for kids to sign on, maybe with a type of badge or some other system. So we're going to play around with that over the summer and see, see if we can get to that point. And that'll help our, all of our kids, but it'll help our really young kids. We're working with maintenance right now and to ensure that classrooms have current touch technology. That's important in kindergarten through two and also at RIS because of how teachers teach. So it's not unusual with our very young kids to have circle time and then have them get up and interact with the smart board or some other smart device. So a lot of these products were installed some time ago, and they're using projectors and it's, and it's all aging. So we have to think about how to do the best instruction and then how we are placed. That's something that we're working on and it's going to be something that happens over time. It can't be something, you know, that we can do in one fell swoop. In kindergarten through two, what was really interesting was that we wanted to work on taking the ISTI curriculum and bringing it down to the age level. So if you look at grades three through 12, we've dedicated teachers to teach technology. But in kindergarten through two, we're doing it through a coaching model. So one of the things that will drive STEAM in schools and particularly at a very early age is having the right resources in place and then also having instruction and then having standards. So we say that this is going to happen at this age and what does it look like? And then build the curriculum. It helps make it happen. So, so that's kind of, kind of the interesting things that are happening there. We had a great year with Ozobots this year, their little robots. And the kids love them. So some of these STEAM tools, these STEAM boxes where they build things are very engaging for all of our kids. And I'm really happy that we're creating more emphasis with our youngest students. The intermediate school, wow. This year, we pushed out something called Little Bit. So when working with Adam Brua, who's the teacher there, I said, "I want them to have some opportunities to work with motors and, and learn about electronics." And so we tested some products out, and this was the product we settled on. And it arrived this year, and apparently the kids love it. So he's teaching with those. There's a lot of coding literacy happening through Ozobots, code.org, and some other tools. We're emphasizing making and STEAM with our young kids. And so there's a very nice maker space there. There's a robot playfield, and we improved the projection systems there as well. So there's screen screening happening. There's all sorts of things happening. And we've been collaborating, Adam and I have been collaborating on instruction around digital citizenship. So I was able to go down and teach with him, and you'll see some evidence of that in a later slide. The middle school, this was another big year for the middle school. So one of the, one of the things that I said to the teachers there is, "What do you want to do?" You know, "What do you want to have happen here?" So one of the things that came up was virtual and reality. We used to have VR headsets, and the product was no longer available. It was through Google. So we're pushing out a VR exploration tool using VR headsets, and we're going to put them in the content area so they'll be used for world language, history, et cetera. So that's something that the integrationists are going to be taking into the classrooms, and the content area teachers are delighted that that's going to happen. There's a media lab there. There's a sound recording lab at the middle school. The maker space moved into the basement, and we bought some additional tools. So one of the things that we purchased was a laser cutter, and I just happen to love laser cutters. I'm wild about them. So I'm so glad that the kids are going to have a chance to work with that, and, and the teachers are excited, too. So I think this is important because when I think about middle school, one of the things I've seen over the last 30 years that I've been in education is that things like shop have disappeared. And so so many of those hands-on activities have disappeared, and that's why I'm really pushing for STEM and STEAM for our kids. Because this may be the only place, you know, other than Stafford, where they get to do some of these things and build some of these things. So for me, it's a priority. And then at the high school, oh, my gosh. We're changing the courses every year. And we sit down and we say, "What do we do? What do we want them to know? What do we want them to learn? What's changed in the environment out there? How has technology changed?" So we didn't know anything about AI in 2019, and we all did an ISTI course, the International Society for Technology and Education. We did the ISTI course on AI. And so Adam Brua did it, I did it, Clarina Renfro did it. And we've taken this information that we've learned, and we've been able to build on it, and now we're teaching about AI. And in 2019, when I wanted to do that, I think the only place I could find it was McGill. When I asked one of our interns, I said, "Where do I go learn about AI?" And he said, "Well, maybe McGill." And it was at such a high level, I would never have understood it, honestly. But we're doing these things that are really cutting-edge at the high school, and that's what I want you to know. Because our kids are facing a future in jobs that I can't even imagine. When I was looking at jobs in artificial intelligence, I thought, "My goodness, like, how can we afford to do this?" And we're trying. I guess my point to you is we're trying, and we may be doing it as well or better than anybody in the state. I really believe that. Thanks. I was having a little trouble. So, so thinking about that innovation, we are, we are working with robotics. Dan, Dan does a great thing with robotics after-school, which is amazing. And we have robotics happening in the classroom, too. Starting in kindergarten, I mean, that, I think that's amazing. And one of our teachers, who was using a marker to teach kids, you know, how to code these robots, and the robots follow the marker she... "No, I want to do more. This is a first-grade teacher. I want to teach them to code them. I want to use block-based programming to teach them to code." It's like, "Oh, goodness gracious. It just doesn't get any better than that." So all those things are really innovative and, and the Gen Conference and the Capstone Projects and all these things that our kids are doing. When, when you go out there and you talk to people from other schools, they just go, "I can't believe this. I can't believe you're collaborating internationally with people, and you're doing these presentations at the high school level, and you're plotter-printing posters that look so professional, you know, starting at middle school." So we have some very good things happening for our kids. And one of the things we are very interested in, and you'll see it in classroom instruction, is digital citizenship. So we want to, we want to have good citizens, we want our kids to be good citizens. So we're exploring how they can engage in positive, safe, legal, and ethical behavior when using technology. And, and that's what, this is a little product from RIS. These are bees. I know they look like butterflies. I made them. I think I made 200 of them. Yeah, it was quite an afternoon. But the kids wrote little notes on them about, you know, who they wanted to be using technology. And then this is the bulletin board, and this was fourth grade. So I thought that was really special. So the last thing I want to leave with you is that all of us are trying to grow through a variety of processes. The professional learning communities that we have in kindergarten through 12, where teachers can talk about technology. We have ongoing one-to-one support with different people across the district. We have integrationists, we've got coaches, we've got me, we've got the tech staff. We're always learning, and we're always presenting. That picture right there, that, those are three of our teachers presenting at Dynamic Landscapes, which is our ISTI affiliate conference. And those are two, first, a first, second-grade teacher and Adam Brua. And, and they were presenting about robots. So that was just the spring. So we're getting out there, too. The last conference that I went to and presented, we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six or seven of us presenting from our school system. We had the biggest representation of presenters from any school district in Vermont. So we're getting out there and sharing, too. And then IT staff is working on industry professional training and certifications. So they're getting Google certified. What are you doing? Anything interesting?
HP Enterprise stuff.
Okay.
I would say it's interesting, but.
And then my staff asked me to share with you that they're doing daily check-ins. So they go from building to building pretty much every day, making sure that not only are we checking our, our help desk, but we're also out there checking with teachers to make sure that everything's going okay. So that's everything I want to share with you.
I think it's like question time, it seems like. I'm just curious for late persons in the community, as far as all the students at the different schools, is every child with their own computer? And how does that look? Do they use the same computer throughout the day? Are they allowed to bring them home? Where are we at with that?
That's a very good question. So every child has their own computer, and they get signed up through the library. And that really helps us to make sure that every child has a computer. And then that also helps us monitor for any kind of breakage or anything missing because it's their computer. As far as kids taking things home, a lot of parents found it onerous to deal with computers coming back and forth in kindergarten through eight. Nine through 12, we've continued to do that. But during COVID, when we asked a lot of parents, "Do you really want us to send, you know, machines back and forth every day with your child?" And a lot of them said no. But at the high school level, we do know it's absolutely essential.
So what would that look like for children that maybe aren't able to do their assignments within the day? Do they, and do they expect they might have another computer at home, or do they get extra time?
So as far as I'm aware, there shouldn't be any homework going home around technology that's requiring kids to do that. So it would, but in nine through 12, I'm certain there is.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I feel really strongly about this topic, and I think you're doing a great job. I have a senior who's going off to university, and I had the pleasure of going to the orientation. And the amount of technology that is being used at the university level is crazy. I, I was even like, "Wow, I can't believe that's happening." Like, I wanted to like quit my job, and I wanted to enroll myself back at school because of all the amenities that it offers that you have at your fingertips through technology. But then again, I realized, I reminded myself that I'm paying for all the technology. Okay, well, but yeah, it's amazing just what they use for the, for the, not only academics, but for counseling help, health, health benefits. If you need a health or laundry is on your phone. I mean, everything is just super technology. You swipe your hand when you're going to go get your, your dining card is swiped by your, you know, your hand. It's all automated. Everything is very into technology. And I think Rutland does a great job supporting that because I feel like my child knows, she was already hooked into everything that they had already. So, and she's very comfortable. very comfortable. So I feel like you guys do a great job and I feel like the more you guys keep up with it. I think it's really important to start them early like you are and getting them used to that because I think that's where everybody's going. You know, obviously, I think it's great because they're, they're really utilizing it up at the upper levels. So it's great. Thank you.
Tricia and Heather?
All right. This is actually Heather's idea. She mentioned this some time ago. But she said, why are we getting these packets in the mail? These are costing money and we're wasting paper. Why don't we have some kind of tablets here?
For these meetings.
I thought that was a good idea.
They think of how much we print in paper and ink if each board member had a tablet, you know, that way we're saving the paper, we're saving the ink, we're saving the postage. That's like $6 a thing times every month, times every person. So just a thought.
Is that what you were going to say?
No, but yeah, I did say that the other day, like wow. So we can put that on a suggestion box. But I just wanted to echo what Charlene said. I've been in the Makerspace with my kid who is like so excited to show me the laser cutter and the this. And he built a mallet somehow and all of these really cool things that he's fabricated and done and just a place to be creative. And, you know, echoing that the world we now live in is AI. You know, Facebook Messenger will now talk to you without a human attached to it. Like we, everything is now focusing around AI and I am just so pleased with how well our school district has specifically pivoted and is placing our kids ahead of many others and in a place where they're getting this at a younger age and figuring out like me, I'm like, I don't know what is going on or how to comprehend half of this. And I can go to my 12-year-old and he can translate what's happening to me. So I applaud you all for the forward thinking and how it's been dispersed through all the schools and all the different grade levels and age levels because I think it's really awesome. And it's putting our kids a step ahead for sure. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it's clear that you've, you all are developing a culture of experimentation, innovation, and early adoption, which is, which is to be commended. Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, our recovery report with Robless and Abby Burdowski.
Bill's out.
I don't know, but. Thank you.
Tell me when you're ready.
So I'm Abby Burdowski. I'm the recovery coordinator and I made a quick video for you all that we'll post on the website after the meeting related to what we've been accomplishing with our ESER money and then where we're headed throughout the next couple of months. So I hope you enjoy it and you can ask questions when you're done.
Oh, it's a video?
Hello, my name is Abby Burdowski and I'm the recovery coordinator for Rutland City Public Schools. Today I'll be taking you on a tour of the progress we have made with our ESER, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant Funds, and give you a heads up about what you'll see this summer. It's important to realize that ESER can be hard to see. So much of the amazing work and important health and safety upgrades happening in the district aren't immediately obvious. These cross-stop to-do lists and plans for ESER construction projects are just one way to actually see the work unfold. The biggest area whose scope is hard to imagine is the planning and execution of our K through 12 articulated, guaranteed, and viable curriculum. Remember that every teacher, coach, and principal are working on this project over the span of several years and are doing an amazing job. We are soon entering a year of creating unit plans that align with our grade level courses. During construction projects, our IT department is vigilant in helping maintain our infrastructure with a smile, like they did here in the Longfellow Building during asbestos removal. In addition to keeping our tech systems running, they're now purchasing servers, subscriptions, and other devices to support our students and teachers, particularly if we would need to shift into hybrid learning again. ESER also supports the future of our district and is being used for both the Batel for Kids Strategic Planning Process and the upcoming RCPS Equity Audit. RCPS is working hard to make sure our schools are welcoming to all. Our district has made a commitment to cleaner air in every Rutland City Public School Building and is investing $3.9 million to this effort. Many high-traffic areas have air purifiers and starting this summer, you'll see our local vendors and buildings making the air we breathe better and our HVAC systems run smoother. Many projects that ESER funds are buried in the interworkings of our buildings, like this pipe insulation in the crawl space of Rutland Middle School. The asbestos insulation was removed from the pipes and new insulation was installed that provides greater energy efficiency in the heating system. RCPS has tutors, counselors, and engagement specialists working with kids daily all year long. K through six schools offer 60 to 90-minute tutoring sessions four times per week during the school year and for four hours per day in the summer. Rutland Middle School's summer program features engaging core content and project-based learning during their three summer sessions, while RHS's School Within a School is an embedded daily program supporting students. ESER funds a total of 13 positions throughout the district and the new K through eight math program is supported by the grant. Teachers are being trained throughout this spring and all next year to ensure the program is implemented well and meets the needs of our students. All of that said, there are also plenty of projects that you can see that use ESER dollars. When you notice five bright new yellow vans driving around town, they came from ESER. These vans support outdoor and community-based learning for students of all ages. RCPS is reinventing classroom spaces while also making them healthier and easy to clean. This is the RMS band room before and after. We are following up this summer with painting to rejuvenate this dynamic learning space and are hugely grateful for the incredible flexibility of the RMS band teachers throughout this project. A huge thanks to the librarians, bus aides, and maintenance folks who packed and unpacked two libraries this year during the school year to make these projects possible before the end of the ESER II grant window. In the RMS library, new flooring and a redesigned space is more welcoming for students and staff. RCPS also removed asbestos in the Longfellow Building, RMS locker rooms, and pipe insulation in the crawl space, and will be tackling the RIS auditorium this summer. By the end of this summer, Rutland Intermediate School will have over 40 classrooms, hallways, and office spaces revitalized with flooring that is easier to clean and more welcoming for students. This project is one of the most visible changes so far with ESER across the district. Finally, one part of the recovery process is to get back to how well we were doing before the pandemic. And another part is to look toward the future and improve. The RIS auditorium renovation combines those two ideas as we think about what once was. And we work through our long invisible lists of priorities to reimagine our classrooms and public spaces so that we can make the important changes that bring us all together as we move into the future. Every ESER dollar spent is one that's not charged to the local taxpayer and Rutland City Public Schools is working hard to use this gift to improve our schools for all. Thank you to everyone who has or will clean out a classroom or who will look out their window onto a construction site as our outdoor classrooms begin to take shape. Thank you to everyone who moved boxes and furniture, rewired spaces, and attended Portrait of a Graduate evening sessions as we move through these projects together.
Well done.
It's better to see it, right?
It covered it. It was really good.
I don't know if it's, it has been a course or something, but I think all the presentations are like amazing.
Yeah.
I don't know what, yeah. And this, I need a lesson. So I need to talk to you after this. So I want to know.
I'd be happy. I was an English teacher for a long time.
Very impressed with you.
Yeah. You got wonderful job. All the presentations were great.
Any questions?
You escaped questions, it looks like.
Just let me know if you have any.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the school partnership consideration with Ms. Megan Marsh, please.
You're reluctant to give up now.
No visual?
I know. Is there a presentation?
interpretive dance?
Namaste. We hope that you've had a chance to look at the enclosures that Superintendent Olson and Principal Challenger offered. We are here to animate and to annotate those brochures. Our goal is to continue our partnership that we have already informally begun with a school in Calcutta with the ultimate goal of asking for permission to explore a partnership which would include international travel. So our rationale is, we've been talking a lot about the stickers of the Portrait of a Graduate competencies. And our first one up there is articulating empathy. Travel is one of the best ways that you can build empathy. It fosters compassion and understanding of others' perspectives and we recognize our shared humanity and treat each other with dignity and kindness. We are looking for that at home and globally. But there are other competencies that also connect with travel of all kinds: communication, collaboration, adaptability, and critical thinking. The late risers are actually on their way home. I've heard that they have successfully and safely landed. And Ron was just saying that, you know, it's such a great experience and it requires all of these competencies, like on-the-fly thinking together. So that's why we want to travel. But why, can you go to the next slide, sir? Why India? And you're also looking at Hindi and Bengali languages up there. However, India is the second-largest population of English-speaking, before Great Britain and Canada and a lot of others. So that's a great opportunity. It's rich in history, architecture, religions, culture, food. It's also expanding its political, social, and economic influences. And we would like to be part of that in collaboration. But why, why this school? We have already been in contact and remotely collaborating with this school, which offers opportunities at all age levels because they have students in the primary all the way to the high school. So there's nothing that precludes us working remotely and establishing a connection in the lower grades. But we would like to visit each other. They have extended themselves to us with friendship and curiosity and sincere desire to collaborate. And over the last year, when we've been trying to reinvigorate this relationship that Ron Eisenman, who would love to be here, has established, they have been collaborative, they have been responsive. Whenever we've asked for an adjustment or a request, they have been gracious and prompt in their response and have accommodated all of the things that we need to make this successful. They are interested in conforming with our policy 8440, which requires our engagement to be a sister city and a homestay where both host schools are involved and invested in safe, healthy, engaged learning during both visits.
The logistics are very similar to other exchanges that you've heard about tonight. We would hope to travel in mid-May, which would include our spring break plus several days on either end. And then we would hope to host our Indian exchange students in June. This part is a little different than some other exchanges that we have. We would host them during our yes plan instead of traveling during our yes plan, which would give us the opportunity to expose them to more Vermont. We could have a cultural exchange yes plan or incorporate them into many of the different yes plans that the high school has. We would ask for a kind of a trial run, a trial year to pilot it, to see how successful it is, to see how the students respond. We would hope to send 10 students and two chaperones. And we would hope, we would keep the cost at about $2,000, which we believe could include airfare, visas, and suggested vaccinations. That is, that falls right in line with what we think a student would be capable of coming up with or fundraising for and falls in line with other exchanges that we offer in our district.
A few frequently asked questions that often come up with any kind of travel or partnership. Things like medical care, travel insurance. This trip would include insurance, which would include the possibility of medical care, even up to and including an emergency. One of the lenses with which we're trying to look at this trip is through ensuring that we are guaranteeing a degree of equitable access, which is difficult in a trip like this. That is a part of our conversations. I cannot sit here today and say to you that I have all of the answers to be able to do so. I can assure you that that is a part of the conversation. We are reaching out to folks in the community to help support financially. And our practice has historically been to work with families with things like fundraising and working together to ensure that it is something that everybody would be able to access. There is a program called STEP, which stands for Smart Traveler Enrollment Program, which allows for live updates on safety and support in case of emergencies while traveling overseas. So in conclusion, I will add, and we have a very brief video that we're going to just excerpt here. We talk about global studies all the time. It is truly baked right into the ingredient. It is a baked-in ingredient in the Rutland High School experience. Like you can't, we have a Global Issues Conference. It's on the wall. We, we, this is what that means. Being able to, not just, we're doing the online and the remote conversations with global communities. This is an opportunity to do that in person. We have, and the promise will not show, and I hope it is.
Namaste. My name is Aritrisan Gupta and I am a student of class eight moving to grade nine at Shri Shikshaathan School, Kolkata. Besides being an avid reader, I enjoy writing, coding, and singing in my spare time. In future, I would like to pursue the field of particle physics. Shri Shikshaathan School offers numerous opportunities for us to explore and excel in our artistic, communal, and scientific pursuits.
My name is Trupi Mittal and I study in class eight. I study in Shri Shikshaathan School and is one of the best schools in Kolkata for providing education to girls. It is the efforts and hard work of all teachers, students, staffs, and parents that have taken forward this school in the form of excellence. The food I like to eat is homemade chole, vettur, and pizza. My hobby is dancing and in the future, I would like to go in the line of coding. Thank you.
We offer that just to kind of personalize it and show you that some of the people that we've been in contact with. They also did a presentation for us at the Global Issues Network Conference about water. That was our theme. And the caliber of the presentation was quite amazing.
Are there any questions?
Kevin, go ahead.
$2,000 for the whole program?
Well, when you're doing a homestay.
Yeah.
It's affordable.
Okay.
And that is in line with the Ponte Surt and with Germany and with other trips. When we used to do a combined trip with Mill River to France every other year, it was between $2,000 and $3,000. And part of the homestay is safety and being able to have a glimpse from the backstage of the insider's view. But it's also very affordable.
Okay. Wow. So what about a student who comes from a family who has no money to kick in? Is, is the fundraising, does fundraising take care of all of the students' expense?
We have not crafted that. And, and if you look at the RISE program, which we have supported for like 30-plus years, it does generally. In some of our other programs, there is a student participation and contribution. But initially, we were hoping in order to get this off the ground to look for grant money and for seed money so that while we are getting the infrastructure of the anticipation, you know, if we're, if we're including the middle school or even some of the younger students, they can think ahead, they can plan, they can look forward to it. They will have pals in sixth grade and then maybe to improve their, to expand their international travel, and it was quite generous. I am confident. I have never had trouble looking for connections for good causes. So, at least in the beginning, we would want to supplement that for that very reason.
Great. The other question I had is, this is a girl's school.
Yes.
So, could male students go on the trip?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And how would, how would they handle that on the other hand?
They are fine with that, and that, we addressed that a couple of years ago, and thought that that might be an obstacle, because we certainly did not want to discriminate on our end in terms of whom we could, who we could send, and they've said that's not a problem. They, at one time, did want to stipulate the ratio of male-to-female students, and we said that we just weren't comfortable with that, and it wasn't aligned with our policies, and so they said they will welcome anybody that we send, and it's not limited to just girls.
Our German trip has done that in the past, where we've had to partner males and females, and we, the families are agreeing ahead of time, the families are aware and prepared, and it has been successful so far in the German program.
Stephanie?
So, is this going to be a retirement project for you?
I know. You know what? I...
You're retiring, so...
I need to work on my pronouns, because I'm still really immersed in "we."
I thought I was confused also.
Well, Ron and I have been dabbling in this for, since he, since the early 2010s, and then I, since 2017, and it was, we had quite a lot of momentum, and then, of course, everything stopped. And, there's a new outreach coordinator who is absolutely charming, and just, she just wants to be friends. That is the goal. And, I don't know that you're not going to see me again. I can't promise that. But, I'm very excited about this. I do have that...
No people like you.
I do have passion about understanding others.
Yeah.
Sorry. This is a means to do that.
Heather and then Courtney.
Oh, yeah. I had a question. This may be too logistical of a question for this point of planning, but is this geared toward a certain grade or age, or would this be open to all? Or, what is the thought?
Initially, we were thinking of taking the middle years of the high school. We want maturity. This is a little bit more out of the comfort zone than, you know, a Western European trip or, so, we want some maturity, but we don't want them to be on their way out the door either. So, that, there's a sweet spot in there. The selection progress process would be very important in terms of equity, in terms of picking, getting the right fit.
That was kind of my next question, too, was hypothetically, I know it said fifteen students, two chaperones. If you put this out there and there were hypothetically thirty kids that were like, "This looks incredible, I want to do this," would there be like an application or...
Yes, there would be an application form, criteria, interviews, possibly an essay, not unlike you do for Model UN as well. You do need to, there's some proving ground that the support that we're offering is a good fit, and that you are a good ambassador. We have, we haven't even looked at some flexibility of maybe students being able to travel but might not be able to host, and we're open to that, but initially, we'd like it to be a one-to-one exchange, just to get it started.
Last question, I promise. Does this tie in with a specific class? Like, would this be something that the kids would get credit with, or an extracurricular?
I don't think any of our trips are credit-bearing, except if they're embedded in a yes plan or something like that, but...
With Germany this year, we did add a .25 elective credit for a global studies major. In the past, it's just been a yes plan, but we were able to make that work for the students this year since they're traveling just outside of yes.
That's awesome. Yeah, there's no better way.
So, there's a possibility that we could make it fit into one of those.
And, part of the beauty of this, and English being an option for our connection, is that it's not language-limited. Some of our trips, like the Ponte Surt trip, is, you do have to have some level of proficiency, and scientists could go, mathematicians could go, you know, musicians could go, and there wouldn't be a discipline-specific requirement.
Thank you.
Courtney?
Question and a comment. Can board members be some, be...
Well, we have, we have quite a pool of interested, it's not a shallow pool of people who would like to be chaperones for this. Initially, certainly Ron has done so much legwork. Our idea is to have, always have one veteran along, so we could have a waiting list for you.
I just love this so much. As a yes-plan graduate who did international travel twice in high school, it was like an incredible experience for me, and so I'm so excited you guys are offering another opportunity for our kids. I think it's awesome.
When you think of the equity piece, yes, we have to look at all of our opportunities that we offer through that, but by having more than just a very narrow few trips, we're also offering a little more equity, because there's more to choose from.
Right, absolutely.
So, we're hoping that this will be something you'll support.
I just, I wanted to comment that your pa, I'm not going to make you cry, your passion for this is very contagious. And, I was just sitting here thinking that our school could very much rest on its laurels and be like, "Oh, yeah, we're international, we do all this international stuff," and we could just kind of sit on that, but you guys are so good at like, "Where's our next opportunity? Where's the next place we could go?" And I love the idea of going to India. I think that is, I think that's giving me goosebumps, so, I just thank you for your involvement and your energy that's being poured into this, and I hope we do get to keep seeing you.
I would then enter, there's no other questions?
I have just...
Oh, so, go ahead.
So, you're going to ask for a motion? Yeah. So, just before that, I just wanted to say, we have a couple soon-to-be-retired folks back there, Patty and Suzanne and Marsha, so I just wanted to thank them for all the work they've done all along. Since Marsha's at the table, I thought I'd say...
Yeah, great. Okay, thanks. I would entertain a motion for us to support this partnership with Sri Shikshyatan?
Our first order of business is to learn how to say the name.
Okay. Were they even close?
I think so.
Good shake.
So, I would support a partnership with Sri, I would entertain a motion for us to support a partnership with Sri Shikshyatan School, yeah, period.
Good job. So moved.
Second.
Great, all those in, are any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Right, motion carries. Thanks.
Awesome.
All right, thank you all very much. Good. All right, Greg, you might as well stay here, I think, right? True, yeah.
Where my pen gone?
No, absolutely. I want to go to India.
I want to go.
There's credit offered, too, because there's no...
Thank you for that.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So, I come with an update. In January, you will recall, the board adopted the policy on non-discriminatory mascots and school branding, and asked that the administration continue the work that had begun, including the development of visual imagery. Since January, we have been continuing that work that was begun, in particular, the replacement of sports uniforms and signs throughout the schools that have included the Raiders' name and Arrowhead logo. That work continues and is ongoing. Regarding visual imagery, we have been using the Block R that predates any of the previous logos with, from Rutland High School. Back in January, I sent out an email soliciting student ideas for visual imagery, and again, later on in the semester, I felt that it was important to solicit student input in that process. Unfortunately, those requests did not solicit any responses from students. I didn't hear any suggestions from students. So, that was Plan A, was to try to get student-generated ideas for visual imagery. What I'd now like to do is to shift to Plan B. I have been in contact with a graphic design clearinghouse, which will allow me to contract with a graphic designer to complete some proposed ideas. I have met with the Student Activities and Athletics Committee to ask for their support in working with a graphic designer, helping the designer to generate the examples, and then bring those samples, bring those suggestions. Those suggestions could then be brought to the student body for their selection. So, as I said, I'm here with an update. Plan A did not go as I had anticipated, but that's okay. Shifting now to Plan B, as I said, reaching out, asking for some other folks to do some of the idea generating, and then bring those ideas for student input and approval.
Yes, Charlene, and then Stephanie, and then Heather. I don't know if that was the order that hands it up, but I was just looking this way for whatever reason.
I think I have more of just a comment or my reaction to that. Feel like, it's been a long discussion. I feel like the students are kind of tired, and I guess personally, instead of going out to an outside source to kind of figure out something that's going to be part of our, whatever, I don't know what, is there a rush? And is there something that we have to do right this minute? Can't we just kind of let this sit a little bit with the Block R until maybe another year for our students to kind of come back around and have some fresh ideas and be re-motivated to, and our students can come up with something that they want to do? I don't know if we have to go out and actually pay for an artist to kind of give us an idea and put that on our plate to do. Are we in a rush? Can we, I'm just putting this out to the board, I mean, are we in a rush? Can we just kind of sit down it a little bit so we can come up with our own idea? That's all, yeah.
Good question. Stephanie?
So, kind of piggybacking off what Charlene, why, if we're going to an outside source, we have a great department in Stafford. When I was recently there, they were working on the new design for the Rutland City Police Department vehicles. So, you know, I mean, we have an amazing program within Stafford. Why are we paying for an outside unit when we can do something within? And, on a side note, when I was recently in the high school, I understand that, you know, we're removing certain things, but I was really disappointed to see that a couple of student art murals were painted over.
I'm wondering, to answer the first part of it, we just don't have any inspiration coming out yet, so that's why they're just not doing it.
But, that's with the digital arts program, that, Melissa could maybe say a little bit more to that, but like, I mean, they create stuff, I mean, they've created so much stuff with just their own, so, you know, I think, I believe that's where we should be going, not outside, but within our own, and have it be a project that this digital arts program works on, at Stafford.
My thought, too, was kind of piggybacking, like, is there a rush? If we put something out to the entire school and no one came back with a suggestion, that's kind of like an answer, in my mind. Like, that's the school voting. They kind of like where things are at, and whether they like it or they don't, no one wants something different. No one spoke up, no one said anything, so that's kind of your answer without an answer, I feel like. So, is there a date or a reason that we have to push this?
I think it's the board.
Yeah, I think it was a date.
Yeah, that's not a question for me.
Okay, so, yeah, that was kind of my, and I like what you said, if it is a thing.
I mean, we have a... Before... I'd like to put it back onto administration to manage this whole process, and then, at their own progress, however you guys feel the student body is being moved, and they are moved to come up with something, I think that'd be upon you guys to kind of let us know if that happens, and we'll talk about it then.
It's going to be Karen and Kevin, and but, can I ask, I need to ask a clarifying question first. So, when you said you put it out to the students, you were looking for people to do some design work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, right, so I just want to clarify, that's work, right? So, that's not...
Yeah, in, if I could, if I could clarify a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
As a teacher, if you give a class a blank piece of paper and say, "Write an essay," there's a certain level of what you're getting back. Like, there's a lot invested in filling up that blank piece of paper. If you're giving a class three options, and you're asking them to pick the right answer, there's a lower level of like investment, if you will. So, I think my Plan A was, okay, here's a blank piece of paper, who would be willing to sort of fill that blank piece of paper? And we saw the response to that. So, this is, that's what I mean in the sense of like, okay, Plan B is a lower level of sort of personal investment.
All right, Karen, go ahead.
Well, I would just first off say that I think the administration has put in a lot of time and effort into this already, so I would not be in favor of dumping it back on you or the administration from the high school to do this. I also think, I would agree that I think time needs to settle before. I mean, I think if, even if you were to come up with something or three different ideas, and you put them back out to the students, I don't think a quarter of the students would be lucky if they voted on it, because they are just so tired of the whole thing. I think that we need to, you know, wait, and maybe, yeah, at some point with the graphic design class, they could be a part of it. You know, it could be a separate thing, but it could be something fun, and not another work activity, and not another thing that whatever they come up with very well could be criticized by this board, to say, "No, we don't like this one," and no, you know. So, I think we need to let time settle this whole issue for a while.
Kevin?
So many different ideas. When you first talked about putting it out to somebody else, I had the same response. Our digital arts program is phenomenal, but also, when we were considering moving to the Ravens, there were a bunch of alumni that came up with great ideas. So, there are people out there. One of the things that, one of the reasons I was thinking of was that, why we wouldn't, weren't getting a response, is that not only the board, but there've been, any idea that's come up around this topic has been attacked. So, somebody puts a lot of work into putting together a design, and then they get attacked. That's not something I would be willing, you know, eager to jump into, so... I agree. Yeah, so, darn, I had one more thought. Yeah, I don't know that we need to do something right away. The que, oh, that's the other thing. The question that I, the only thing that I was thinking about is, we do need to replace uniforms and things like that. Do you know what our schedule is on that sort of stuff? We are, we're proceeding, you know, we've made progress even just within the last month or so. The good news is, with the word Rutland and the Block R, we have something to go to. We had, we had uniforms before that said just Rutland, so it doesn't seem out of the ordinary. So, that continues, that work continues. Okay, okay. So, from my perspective, we don't have a, there's no great rush, from what I'm seeing.
Stephanie, and then Charlene, and then Karen.
I just want to pay you back off what you said and what Greg just said in regards to uniforms, because I am, you know, very involved with the Booster Club, and we've already, there's been, I believe it's been three sports teams that have gotten updated uniforms this school year, and it's not necessarily, it's them coming to us and, you know, this the cycle. So, I mean, we are getting closer to having them...
They do wear out.
Yeah. They do, but you have, you know, boys' basketball got brand-new varsity uniforms two seasons ago, so, and those were, you know, Raiders, but, so, but, I mean, it is going, it is happening, but I guess at this point, if we are going to just, you know, do this, and we have to figure out how to amend our original motion that we have went back and forth with a few times to make this process...
Sure. Charlene?
I just wanted to maybe clarify what I meant about putting it on administration, meaning you do what you need to do, when you need to do it. I didn't mean to say to do anything. So, maybe those words didn't come out. I just wanted you to be clear that...
I got it, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I would just make a motion that we table this issue for six months, and we can revisit it.
Longer than that, honey, a long, I don't want to sit through this while I'm on the board again.
So, we can, we have a motion, so either we have a second or...
What's the motion?
Second.
The motion is to table, table this for six months. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question before we...
Well, there's now, now, now there's discussion on the motion.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, right? Am I doing this correctly? Is there a second?
Can I ask a question before we?
Well, there's now, now, now there's discussion on the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, right? Am I doing this correctly?
Yes.
Need us to decide on some?
So, Kevin, I, so I've always been, in my experience in working with Robert's Rules of Order, is that tabling means you're trying to kill something. And I just want to clarify that, where I think we're not, well.
Well, I'm not trying to ta, let me just clarify, I'm not trying to table anything. I'm just saying the issue is not, this is not an appropriate time to raise the issue. And it's still going to be out there and we're still going to look at this.
Right. So I would say that maybe we entertain a motion to just create another deadline and if we create a deadline and then we, and we're not ready, we move it again. Because tabling has a history of killing things. It's a way to kill a bell.
That's not, that's not what tabling is. We're just at, not at the point where we can reach a decision on it. So the motion is still, remains out there, whether, and I did set another deadline of six months, but there's no point, I mean, I think the administration has done what they can and maybe the board needs to come up with some creative ideas as to resources, maybe that we can tap into and also talk with Stafford about, you know, what, what they could possibly do.
I think I'm going to have, I think, I don't remember whose hand was up. I don't know whose hand was up first.
I don't know.
But Sarah hasn't gone yet, so I think we try to do that. We try, do we try to do that?
Oh, no.
Sarah and then Charlene.
I just wanted to say that Greg just clarified that he wasn't actually looking for us to make a decision, so is it even necessary for us to decide something? Like, I know there was a motion, so we have to proceed with that. But like, if we just kind of, if the motion didn't go through, then there wouldn't be a decision and we could just let him give us, like, he gave us an update and we just carry on. I mean, is that?
I think that we gave him a deadline of June, the June board meeting. Come with something, so we have to make some action items tonight. Whether it's, and it might be just semantics of, you know, might just be semantics. So Charlene and then Heather, I think.
Maybe going off of what I'm feeling, like, if we can just get through the semantics of what this is and can we just put this to, I don't feel as a board member, as a commissioner, I need, we need to keep micromanaging this imagery. We know what the rules have come down, we know what they are, we've gone 90% of the way, we just need an image. I feel like administration and what they do in the schools can manage that part, and I just was wondering if we can kind of, if there's a possibility tonight where we can kind of move through that, the semantics of the June presentation and just now put it on them. And when they are moved and the students are moved and everybody's moved to come up with an image at the right time, Greg will come and he'll let us know and it'll all be great. I'm just putting it out there.
Heather and then Karen.
I just feel like, I don't even know who said it, but this has become such a divisive issue in not just our schools, but our community, that it's, and truthfully, I think Kevin said it too, you know, then it creates an icky feeling on anyone wanting to contribute their ideas and wanting to submit things because no one wants to be judged and it doesn't matter, you know, it literally draws a line in the sand, you know, left, right, up, down, purple, green, who, whatever. And for the moment, we have peace. We are Rutland and we have a Block R, but no one's upset with that. And you put out the email to the community and no one submitted something different because no one is that upset with the Block R, that they wanted to submit something different, even a script R. Like, no one submitted anything different. So if there is a deadline of June that we must figure something out, why are we pushing to put more emails, to get more information, to add more divisiveness and stress when the year is ending, put, you know, either tabling it for six months and then revisiting it when people are fresh and it's less divisive and people may come at it with a different angle or a different breath of fresh air? Or we may decide that maybe Rutland just wants to be a Block R forever because Rutland is Rutland and that's okay. You know, Rutland may be different things to different people and that's cool. So the R is the R. I just feel like there's no, pressing things right now is only going to create that anger and animosity and divisiveness, which we're pushing for inclusivity. And we're pushing for us to be a community and, you know, creating more divisiveness is the opposite of what we really want at the end of the day. So I think tabling is a good idea.
Oh, yeah, I said in my head it was Charlene, but Karen, it was you, sorry.
No, I would just reiterate what Heather just said and the fact that if we, you know, say to Mr. Schillinger, okay, well, we're putting it back on you and you have something to back. I mean, again, I don't think that's their responsibility and again, it's a question of what is the process going to be? Are they going to go through all of this again only to have no satisfaction and nobody wanting to participate in this? So that's why I'm saying we table it and in six months, we bring it back out and we decide what, what is the fresh approach to take to this? How are we going to do this? Are, you know, has there been some interest expressed by students? Or, you know, is there a program that we could get to help facilitate that? But I agree with Heather. I mean, at this point, you know, things have calmed down and I don't think we need to stir it up. We've got time and I don't think the six months is unreasonable.
Kevin?
I like the idea of just, we don't need to decide anything today. We can let this happen organically. We don't even need to give it a six-month deadline. We could also, this is, I don't know where this is coming from. An ad campaign is going on in my head. We are Rutland with a big R.
Yeah. We have to do something with emotion.
There's some T-shirt that's already on.
Or, or, there's a, remember years, years back, there were those, there were trains here in Rutland, there were pigs somewhere, there were, were artists in the community, like, took a basic design and they painted it. We could have one of those kind of, kind of like, community activity. You know, there's lots of things we could do with this, but we don't need to rush into it and we don't need to create a structure for when it's going to happen. We can just let it happen. That's my view.
Yeah, Tricia, go ahead.
Having sat through this discussion multiple times and I feel like my blood pressure elevates because I'm just like, I can't believe I'm hearing this again. I have to say, I think that I, all I can think is we are controlling because I agree with Charlene. It's time to just be done, just let it go. You'll figure it out in a year, two years, three years, four years. Maybe we'll have the R. But if I have to sit through this conversation in another six months, God help me, okay? I'm truly done. We are controlling, we need to let it go. That's all I have to say.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Of course you can.
Based on one of our last motion, which is, I honestly don't remember, so can we let it go or do we have to, do we have to do, like, we have to vote on something? So we can let it go, let's let it go. Have to do something, let's just do it.
So I think we gave the administration, we charged them with coming to us with some sort of a moniker at our June board meeting. So we have to either extend that deadline. I had intended to say, hey, let's, let's make a motion to have a, well, have a check-in in January. That was going to be my, you know, again, I think it's semantics, I think.
Well, that's table.
Yeah.
That's the same thing, yes, it is.
Karen, we don't argue about that, we don't. It's, it's okay. I'm just saying that it just, yeah, it, it's not my experience.
Do we have the option of rescinding or not? Is that on the table? Is that something we can vote on to rescind?
We would have to go back, I believe, to what the original, the sec, the motion was and we would need the words for that. Because if we recall, there was an issue and Peter Fagan is the one who corrected us on the issues of the last motion where we changed it to June.
Well, so let me just say a couple quick things if I, if I may. So I do think that clearly the, whatever action we take tonight is just to not make a decision tonight, right? And I think we can all agree on that, right? That we're not, you know, forcing you to give us a moniker tonight because you don't have one. Start drawing. You know, so I think that it is extremely common to hire these things out, both in high schools and in higher education. This is an extremely common thing that, that people do. And while I agree that Stafford, our kids are absolutely amazing, I do fear rejection, right, of them. And I think that could be real, you know, either by, I'm not saying by us, but by the community, right? So I think you hire an outside sort of company that's hired, that does this as a professional and they have thick skin, they don't care, they make whatever they're, they're making to do that. I do think that, like, I already asked Greg to clarify, it was, he was asking for students more that, for more than just submitting an idea, but something that required a bit of work. So I think we can't pretend to understand exactly why we are sitting where we are, why Greg is sitting where he is, right? And so, and again, so, and I think to assume that no one's upset with the Block R, again, is, I think, presumptuous. So just, it's really presumptuous. It's all I wanted to say on that. And so, Kevin, your hand was up, I think.
Yeah, so procedurally, did we have a second of Karen's?
We did, that's why we're in discussion, yeah.
So do we need to, we do need to vote on that?
You do need to vote on this motion. So are we, Karen?
Well, I can amend my motion because according to Robert's Rules, there's a motion to postpone indefinitely, which kills the original main motion without a direct vote on it.
Do it.
So I, so move.
Second.
You're move, you're moving to suspend your motion?
No, well, to amend my motion to, a motion to postpone indefinitely, which kills the original main motion without a direct vote on it.
You're, meaning the main motion is your motion that you made tonight or the one that we made?
Both of them, anything that's on the table, we postpone it indefinitely.
Again, procedurally, whenever it was that we did this, we asked Greg to come and, and report. He's done that. We could say thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have the original motion?
Brooke.
So is that fulfilled by saying thank you?
Karen has considered an action item on the agenda.
Yeah, right here, she says yes.
So can you just take, can you take back the motion you made and make another one? Right, yeah, yeah.
Can we make a motion?
No, 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 we have to.
I thought you just undid your motion.
No, because we didn't vote.
Oh, Stephanie, are you okay?
I was just backing up. I told you I'm not.
Okay, so.
I know.
I thought tonight would be easy. Okay, not that I thought this would be easy, but I, yeah, we're.
Right out of Robert's Rules.
Yeah, so are we? Well, but I don't, so it has to be specific as to, I mean, so we have a motion on the floor, she can only amend the motion that's currently on the floor, that I know. And so we can, right, okay, I'm getting a nod from Abby and I like that. I don't know what that means, but she's smart and so I'm going to go with that. So we have to, that I do know, we can only deal with what's on the floor currently, that I do know. And so that's on the floor and so we can, Karen, would you like to pull your motion? And, I mean, can we do that? Can we vote?
That's what she just said.
Vote to cancel her motion, however that works.
Right, and we're, we're not taking any action on the original motion, so it just sits there. I mean, it's the same thing as tabling something, but.
No, it's not, it's, yeah.
Okay, didn't we not table stuff in committee? Never mind.
So he, so he fulfilled the original motion, we said thank you. She's going to take back her motion and then we're good?
I think, I think we have to vote on, on her motion because she amended it and now we have to.
So at this point, voting yes would be to?
Table it?
Have it no longer be a viable motion.
To table her.
Postpone indefinitely.
Okay, let's just do that.
Postpone indefinitely.
Table her motion of tonight.
So postpone indefinitely.
Her motion of tonight, Karen's motion of tonight.
Let's do it.
I already moved to amend that, postpone indefinitely.
The motion that you made tonight?
Yes.
And I seconded it.
Okay.
Authorize if we need to.
Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, we're good. All right, done. Indefinitely with this whole discussion?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, listen to the crowd, we're all happy.
I know what you're saying.
I think we need to go back to the original motion and see what we asked Greg to do.
Give us to come up with something by this meeting.
By a date.
Yeah.
Right, that was the original motion.
Right.
And we made a date. So you, I think she postponed her motion indefinitely. Someone could make a new motion, says we're going to postpone the original motion indefinitely.
I make a motion to postpone the original motion indefinitely.
Second.
The original motion?
Oh my god, this is the problem, nobody knows the rule.
No, no, I think we can do that. And then I, I think when, we can at any point in time put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
And ask you to come back and give it an update, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any, any discussion on the, on the motion?
I'd like to call the question.
To, I'm talking, can you wait till I'm done talking, Kevin? So I, I'd like to know if there's any discussion on, Kevin, I was literally in the middle of a sentence, okay? All right, thank you. So I'd like to know if there's any discussion on the motion, I'm just trying to reiterate the motion so we all know what's on the floor, which is to postpone the original motion, asking Greg or the administration to come and give, and give us a moniker today, which we're not prepared to do, which is totally fine, we're grateful for all the work you've done, as you've heard numerous times tonight. And to say that we're going to postpone that indefinitely, okay?
Okay.
And any discussion on that motion? I know we already have a second, right?
But if I make the motion, can I make a comment about it? Or is, I don't know what the rules are.
Yeah, we are now in discussion. We are now in discussion.
But I can amend my own motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Karen's, well, Karen, right now, Charlene has the floor.
Because that's not what I intended to say, I guess. I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to talk about it ever again. I don't want to say that it's open-ended for the rest of our lives, that we can keep talking. I meant it's dead in the water and you'll come to us when you guys are moved by the spirit.
If that seems politically right.
But I feel like that's why it's postponed indefinitely, so that when they do come to us.
Yeah, okay, so I'm sorry, Karen, you're right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm just frustrated as to why we're going back to an original motion. The motion was for him to bring back some examples of monikers. He's fulfilled his obligation.
For this is over.
There is nothing new to report. We're tabling the issue or we're.
Postponing indefinitely.
Yes, postpone indefinitely. That means until somebody brings it up, either because the administration hears the students want to bring it up or someone on the board wants to bring it up, it's gone. So I'm not sure why we're voting yet again.
I only did it because I thought I was supposed to. I'm trying to help here.
Karen, your, your, your motion was to kill your, your, your dendum was to kill your, Kevin's hand was up before, I'm sorry, Kevin.
Okay. I apologize for interrupting you, but I said, called the question before you spoke. I want to just, it seems like we're all in agreement here. Can we just?
No, we're not.
I don't think we are. I feel like.
Does anybody want to pursue this discussion further tonight? Raise your hand.
Ever?
Does anybody want to do it in the fall or in six months?
No, no, no.
See, I think we're all in agreement.
We're done. We're done.
That's the part that I'm trying to get to. We can just be done with this.
How do we do that?
So Charlene, can you?
We have an agenda.
Can you explain what you meant by your, by your motion?
I meant, I don't ever want to talk about this again. That's basically what I meant. I don't want, I don't want to talk about it unless he is moved by the spirit and the kids and everybody and he, and he, Greg decides he wants to come and talk about it. Greg doesn't want to come and talk about it, I'm good. If you feel like you need to come and talk to us about it, that's up to you and I'm happy to have you. But that's the way I feel. way I feel.
My, my understanding of the sense of the board at this time, and I'm sorry, my, my understanding is that if I have something to report to the board, I can ask for an agenda item to be added and I can bring that report to the board. Similarly, if the board would like an update or information, the board can request that an, that an agenda item be added to upcoming meeting and I would be asked to come with a report, should the board at that time request it.
Okay. Karen?
Well, the only thing I would add to that is that this has not been warned to the public that there is not going to be any moniker going forward other than the R. And I think we owe it to the public to say, we're going to table this. If people want to come and talk about it, then it's still open. Um, but I will just let it go.
We warned that there was an action item tonight.
Yeah.
For him to bring issue, bring ideas, not that we were going to get rid of it now and say, nope. You know, people didn't, students didn't respond, so now we're not going to have anything, or we're just going to have the R.
Sharlene, I think I misunderstood. So are you intending to say that Greg can't keep working on this?
I want to put it off of the board, commit, the, the whole entire plate of the board because there, we have bigger things to deal with. I wanted to say, Greg, at your purview, you can work on it. If students have ideas, great. You're, you're in the school. You know what's going on. I don't want to force the issue. Again, if it's a year from now or five years from now and you want to bring it up because you have an idea, that's great. But as far as us talking about it and putting parameters around any timelines for you, I don't want to do that. I just want the administration, they know the kids, the kids, you guys can, it's the board, we have other things to talk about. I just want to talk about anything but that. I, I know it sounds, I guess it's, and I apologize because I'm, I guess my frustration is coming out on it because we've talked about this quite a bit and I just want to, I, I'd like to talk about other important things. That's kind of the whole gist of what I'm saying. And as us commissioners here, if we can just come up with it, I don't know what Robert's rules has to do with a lot of this. I just want to get through the red tape and do what we want to do as a board. And if we agree on it, great. I, go.
Kevin?
Can I make a motion or can we modify the motion that we will maintain the status quo until somebody has an interest in making a change? How's that work?
Should we clarify though, within the school and not on the board? Because I think there might be board members that are more interested and it's really a school-based issue.
No, I don't think that's appropriate.
No. I don't think that we should be interjecting anymore. And I feel like it needs to be.
Can we just make it simple then that we're going to maintain the status quo that?
Perfect.
We are Rutland?
Yes.
Correct.
Is that?
Beautiful.
And who seconded it?
Second.
Okay. But doesn't, anyway.
Yeah.
I feel like she's going to want some clarity as to what we're saying. What is the actual, right, so what's the motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor is that we will maintain our, um.
R.
We are Rutland and, and the block are.
So you're just adding the block, you're just, you're just adding to Sharlene's motion that will remain the block R. Indefinitely. So we have to vote on the amendment first, correct? We have to vote on the amendment first, so.
Okay.
All right. Um, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Nine? Nine, zero, it passes. Okay?
So now we voted on the motion?
Then we mo, yeah, then we vote on the motion. So, um, any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes nine, zero. Thank you, Principal Schillinger.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Austin, uh, Bill, you ready for your superintendent's report?
That's going to be so boring compared to this. Lauren, just when you thought you escaped. Okay, so let's see. Back to some of the topics that we're talking about. We, we have this on our table. This is the Grove Street newsletter. And if you check inside there, this pictures of some of the class of 2023 graduates are included in here, um, who attended Grove Street. And also on the front page is an article about Carolyn Mervena, another retiree leaving Rutland High School. She's the teacher leader at that, at Grove Street. And we have a really nice story about her. She's in the newspaper recently as well. So congrats to.
I had a comment to that. I wanted to say what another wonderful job the students have done with putting this together. I mean, it's very interesting reading and very insightful and a job well done.
Thanks. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Definitely.
Uh, also at your, your table is the year, the 2023 yearbook. And I wanted to congratulate and thank Clarina Runfrow, who is the IT teacher who leads this, uh, yearbook development. And she has a group of kids who, who work on that all through the year. They do a really professional job. It takes a lot of work. They get training from, um, the yearbook company that, so they, they really learn the process and they create a very memorable product in the end. So I wanted to thank them and congratulate them for that. And you as board members are welcome to keep those, or if you would like to donate them back, uh, we can find, uh, folks who would like to have a copy. Maybe couldn't have bought a copy before. So you can keep them or donate them back. I want to give the board a quick hiring update. We're, last month, we talked about where we were at, uh, in a very competitive job market. And we, I wanted to thank all the folks that are sitting right there, who, who have done all this work through the past couple of months, uh, trying to find great candidates to work for us and serve the district. Um, so they've made good progress through the month. We still have a little ways to go. But right now, just to tell you where we're at, uh, RHS has one teaching opening, open, open. Yeah, Stafford has one counseling opening. RMS has two openings, two teaching openings. RIS has three. And Northwest PPLC has one counselor opening. And Northeast and Allen Street are, are full, complete. So we should, we're in pretty good shape. Um, we're always looking for pair of educators. I think we are maybe four down right now. So that shifts through the summer and we hope to fill that up by the end of, end of the summer. And you, uh, in the consent agenda, you saw a letter that talked about how our summer hiring process works. When we, um, go through a process of interviewing and committing to someone, I, I will send you an email that will say, here's, here's the candidate, that, you know, you'll get a description. And if you have questions or comments or concerns about that candidate, you want to let me know right away. Um, otherwise, we're committing to that person and then they get approved at the August board meeting. So it's important that you communicate if you have a, have a question. Um, a quick word about PCB testing. We've, we've talked about that in, at the committee level and at the board level too, I think. But I wanted to just make sure the public knows where we're at. The legislature is requiring that, uh, school buildings of a certain age get tested for PCBs. And that's being led by the Department of Environmental Conservation. They have a schedule out statewide for the schools that need to be tested. And, um, I think it's set up to run over three years, Glenn, I think. Is that's?
Through July of 2025.
Four years. Okay. Twenty-five? Is that right? Oh, twenty-five, okay. Um, so we started with our first school just recently. Northeast was tested. And, um, that was in April. And I'll use the phrase that they, that Department of Environmental Conservation came back with. They said there were no detectable levels of PCBs found in the indoor air of your school. So that's, that's the sentence that they use for, you're all good. So, um, we'll continue with, through the queue with that. Um, I think middle school's up next at some point. They're just, they're slow going through the process. So we'll see when that happens. And when that hap, does happen, we'll communicate to the public. Um, I have a big, on my little notes here, I have capital S. Congratulations to the graduates of the class of 23, 23. There you are. Um, we, Holden already, already mentioned graduation is Thursday night, 6:00 PM at the Spartan Arena. You are welcome. Please, please come and join our, our line. Or you can sit with your family.
Yeah.
Do that. Um, and we also have senior awards tomorrow night. And that is at Rutland High School on Sutton Road in the gymnasium. That starts at 6:00 PM. And I think that was it about graduations. I just wanted to congratulate the graduates and their families. Um, last day of school is Friday for all the rest of our students. And I wanted to thank the, the families, the, the, uh, the community, the staff, and the students themselves for, we had a really good year this year. Um, we, you know, we've had challenges over the last couple of years coming through the pandemic. And everything's felt like it was getting more and more normal. And I think we've had, as you can see from the various reports through the year, a lot of good things happening in the schools. So I wanted to congratulate the, the kids for a good year and, um, and their families as well. And thanks to the board for supporting the schools. We, you've done a lot of good work to help us get there. So the last word is happy summer.
Thanks, Phil. Uh, Stili, Miss Stephanie, would you like to, I don't know why I just called you.
All right, Stili.
Sorry. Uh, Stephanie, would you like to?
Before I do my report, I have to chuckle. I was flipping through this and Lauren, you got chatterbox. As long as I've known you and the sports that you have played with both of my kids, chatterbox is not a word I would use to describe you.
I was surprised by that, too.
I just, sorry. Um, put you on the spot. Um, so Abby has done a lot in about what I was going to talk about in, um, my building update. And Bill just brought up the PCB. So, um, in our, uh, most recent meeting, we did discuss the, um, the Northeast PCB update, which as Bill just said, we had no detectable levels of PCBs. And Rutland Middle School will be, I believe by the end of this month was what we were last told. Um, there is, um, I wanted to just, so over the summer, there's going to be between like 30 and 40 projects that the buildings crew and contractors and everybody involved in that is going to do. And I just want to highlight, um, a handful. I've kind of picked one from each school that, um, continued upgrade to the RIS auditorium, which Abby did put in there. Um, elevator replacement at Rutland Middle School, the front entrance awning at Stafford, um, several outdoor classrooms. Um, Northeast is going to be getting some fresh painting and roof repairs. Allen Street basketball court resurfacing. Um, PPLC kitchen upgrade and Longfellow is security access. So all the entrances will be controlled. Um, so those, I mean, these aren't, these are not set in stone. They are hoping based off everything if it goes well. So, um, I just want to thank, uh, Glenn and Abby for everything and Rob for all of you guys are doing. And Glenn, your staff getting us all ready for graduation on Thursday and this past week, um, the, uh, Stafford, um, uh, graduation of sorts. Um, yeah. And our next meeting is in September.
September.
I don't remember what we decided, so.
Heather?
I just had a question. And first of all, I want to apologize for not being at the last building committee meeting. I'm not in the committee, but I try really hard to get to as much as I can. And there was just family timing conflicts. But I did read the minutes and I, it was discussed a little bit in the financial committee, um, but about the redoing of alumni field. Um, the resurfacing is, that's obviously past due and seems like it definitely needs to be done. But my question too was, in the process of redoing alumni field, I'm assuming they're probably going to take it all up and then redo the beads that are inside. Will they be relining it and adding lines for the teams that don't have it? Because of course, we want to create an equitable, inclusive situation for everyone. And I know the field hockey team doesn't have the opportunity to play on that field because there's no lines. Um, so just thinking in the midst of that project.
In regards to the field hockey field, it's more like taking chunks out of turf with the sticks?
Not sure about that because I've looked into some of it.
That's what I've been told in the past, so.
Do we want to have Glenn?
I'd love to have more information about that actually.
So U, I'm sorry. U Hockey has their own turf field that they play on?
They are.
The grass.
Oh, turf.
Yeah, yeah. Natural turf.
Natural.
But as far as the replacement of the turf, that'll all be, basically it's a graphic design. So they'll figure out, you know, work with the athletic department to figure out what sports need to be played. And then it's printed, basically. And then, once it's, um, measured, then they'll come out. And once they install it, all the lines will be already embedded within the product of work when it shows up. Yeah. So the, the painting is done in the factory, then it's brought out, laid.
My question moving forward though is, I know previously there were not lines for field hockey. So there were lines for boys and girls soccer. There were lines for boys and girls lacrosse. There were lines for boys football, which leaves an inequitable situation. So the girls' teams are at a disadvantage. And just since we're redoing it anyway, and we're putting the money into alumni field anyway, and we're relining it anyway, wouldn't it be hooves to get this done in one fell swoop as opposed to dealing with a Title IX issue later?
I don't know if it's a question for you. It's maybe it's more me. And, and I, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
You wait. I thought I saw you.
Yeah, I did. I gave you the, go ahead.
So Heather, you brought that up the other day at the committee.
Yeah, and I was told to revisit it here, so.
Yeah. And I, I talked to Mike about, McNorman about it. And the history of it was that when it was done back, uh, whenever that was, 2008, with the, the alumni field, the, there wasn't an interest, was not an interest in field hockey to have that, have their field done or have it done on, on turf. They have their own space, um, that's so, really solely theirs. It's used a little bit during, um, outdoor spring track, when, you know, just as a place for them to throw the discus or whatever. So otherwise, it's all theirs. So equitably, they, they have their own good space.
But not turf.
So if we were to use, if we were to, we, we would like to actually turf the whole thing. And that would be, I think we looked into that. Was that a significant amount of money?
Yeah, I think it was like 1.75 million.
Oh, I'm sure.
To do that. And, uh, I think maybe three quarters million included lights.
So comparatively, what does it cost to add one more set of lines to the graphic?
So again, I'll, yeah, I might have to defer that to the.
Yeah, so just to continue, I mean, if we were to do, use that field, turf field for, for field hockey as well, then we'd have to use the natural turf field for the other sports.
So?
Um, well, I think it's, now that's a question back to Glenn. I think that the damage done to the grass field would, would be significant, especially if you're using it for other sports like football practice or, or whatever.
I actually have a lot of experience with field hockey. I've been official at the high school and college level for 20 years. Um, and I'm pretty confident in saying that Rutland's the only D1 school for field hockey that doesn't have turf in the state. So they're at a serious disadvantage. D1 field hockey.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So in an equi, creating an equitable situation and not putting them at a disadvantage, since we are doing this already, I, it would be a question maybe to put to the team to see, would they be interested in access to the turf?
That was my, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That was my next step. We'd, we'd like to talk to the team.
Can we hear from Lauren?
And the only other thing I was going to say is, I think there are four turf fields in Vermont. South Burlington, us, Burn Burton, and.
There's one more you told me. CVU.
The CVU.
Is it CVU?
You know Lauren?
Um, I think at CBU, Burlington will have one.
Yeah, they do.
So.
And Millbury has.
And all the schools that have, like in my experience playing field hockey, all the schools that have turfs, they're primarily for field hockey. And like, I know some schools have turfs that field hockey use and football doesn't. And I think that's mainly because field hockey is supposed to be on turf sports. When you go to prep schools and stuff, they have their own specific, like, very thin turf just for their field hockey team, which is obviously very hard to do at our school. But when we went off to playoffs and obviously all the schools were playing our turf schools, we then have to transition to turf, which is very difficult when you've been playing on grass for your entire season.
Huge disadvantage.
Yeah. So.
Thank you for your testimonial.
I appreciate that. And, you know, looking after the equitable, we want it to be equitable for everyone.
Karen, and then?
I was just going to say, is this a discussion more for the athletic, um, committee? And I know they have the meetings and everything. I'm not sure.
Or is it building? Because building is what, is doing the field.
Right. The building's doing what athletics tells them to do.
Okay.
We take direction from the athletic department.
No?
Yeah, I'm not against the concept, but I, I think if we were to, if we line it and it's being used by field hockey, which is, which is fine, then that grass field is going to be used by other teams, which I don't know. I think we've always, we, we really try to protect that field. It makes, it's, it's in perfect shape and it's, um, it doesn't have, you know, there's no goalie spaces with.
Lauren was just saying how a disadvantage they're at at playoffs when they don't have access throughout the entire season to turf. Um, so, I mean, there are, I'm sure you know, fields throughout the state that are in terrible shape of grass.
And I think sometimes it's hard because like, there are days, I think most of it comes down to football scheduling. Like, we practice at the same time and football gets the turf over field hockey. And there are days where we've asked permission to like go on the turf just to practice when we'll play BBA the next day. And we aren't granted that permission because it's a, it's a football field. And field hockey takes, takes precedence.
Not equitable.
Well, and at the end of the day, we want to create an equitable situation for all of our athletes, period. We want to be inclusive of everyone. And since we are doing this project, you know, this isn't out of left field and starting something new. It's going to be happening anyway. We're going to be redoing the field. So why not have this conversation now and save ourselves thousands later? So why not have this conversation now and save ourselves thousands later as opposed to revisiting it?
I think that anytime you're going to make a big change, you want to make sure that you, we certainly trust your knowledge, Heather. You know, obviously with your background. And I, but I do think Bill's statement about looking to really engage all the stakeholders, right? And to understand what that then means for that grass, that natural turf field. And talking to the coaches, right?
Absolutely.
You know, and I think that's where you were going.
Right.
Correct? Yeah, with that idea. That, this is not off the table. It's just that, I think that's where you were going with that. Yeah.
Who's the liaison in the group to the athletic committee? So I guess that may be something that we can, you know, when you guys.
Can you make sure everyone is notified when the next meeting is so we can all attend?
I wasn't notified for a year. I think I was on.
But moving forward, yeah.
Yeah, we discussed that at the last committee meeting that we need to work on that notification.
I brought that up.
Yeah.
So if we could all be notified for the.
Committee is a committee.
Agreed.
And it should.
And then whoever wants to attend or is able to. Yep.
I think it's, I think it's not a committee of the school board. I think it's a different type of committee.
But shouldn't it be a committee of the school board if it decides things such as this at the school board?
The Pension City Committee, the Pension City, that's a committee.
Correct.
With board members and, so it just, it, as you just said, it needs to be warned because.
It's not, it's not warned because you don't have that, you don't, membership that creates a quorum. So you certainly can attend.
Can we, why is there not membership to create a quorum?
Because it's not a committee of this board.
Why?
It's not part of our structure.
I don't know. I'm just thinking. I don't mean.
No, it's like, it's just the portrait of a student thing.
I don't know the history of it.
Where they turned it into a board meeting because we couldn't all be in one place.
My just thought.
It's not part of our structure and it's not in the policies right now. It's a separate committee that the high school has, correct? And it's athletics and activities. And so we have usually one or two board members that are simply the liaison to that.
So this separate committee decides though, or pushes forward suggestions to decide what goes to the building committee. Should there not be a quorum?
It's a less structured committee.
Oh, Bill, go ahead.
There are a lot of decisions that are made by the administration in these committees that don't come to the board, like you were discussing a few minutes ago about the imagery. So, yeah, so the board isn't involved in every decision that's made below the board level.
So we'll all know though, moving forward, so we can all attend the next one if we want to.
I don't, I don't think this decision is made there. I think it's more of an advisory group.
I thought Glenn said that it comes from, sorry, didn't mean to.
I think it's more of an advisory group, the athletics and activities.
Yeah, and they're, they're asking Glenn and maintenance to do whatever steps they need to do for it. So right, so it's not telling Glenn what to do, but no.
Right. Are they a decision-making body? They don't seem to be.
Well, they're, yeah, they're helping to guide.
They're advisory.
The administration also makes those decisions.
I think they're advisory. They don't have like absolute power.
So who then would, so I recommend putting in another set of lines while we're doing all of this. But Glenn said he defaults to the athletic. So has that come to Glenn then to decide if that happens? And then it goes before the building committee? Or how does the process work?
So I'll let Bill go, but we are policy governance. And so we govern by the policies that we have in our book. And this is, for risk of sounding elitist, that is below our level. I mean, is that the.
Yeah.
Sorry, no, I mean, like this, this is important, right? It's hugely important. And I think Bill has committed to exploring with stakeholders. And I think that's what we can ask him to do. Karen?
Well, I would just say that we ultimately approve their budget or disprove it. So I think that we do have some input into it. And I don't see a problem that all the board members should be notified of when these meetings are, whether it's advisory or not. We should have the opportunity to appear if people want to, to hear what's going on with not just athletics, but other programs.
Go ahead.
You're welcome to come to those meetings.
Right. We just don't know when they are.
When they are.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get that information to you.
What if we have six show up?
I don't know if there's one coming up soon though. I mean, probably not.
Probably not till. If there's six shows that are in the month or the month before.
May.
They're every month.
But are they through the summer?
Uh-uh. They're not meeting again until September.
I mean, in reality, we have to approve the amount. So I mean, we should, I mean, have some sort of discussion on it. But anyway, so thank you, Heather, for bringing it up.
Not a problem.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Glenn.
You got it.
The available to step up to the plate. All right, I think I'm up. Stephanie, I'm sorry I called you Sudley. Apparently I am now a coach and this is my team.
You know, you've been doing this since day one, so whatever. I don't care.
I think it's, I mean it as an endearment.
I know. It's mine. I take zero offense.
Good. All right, okay. My name is Lennox for the first like 27 years of my life. I didn't even know my first name. So, okay. All right, I guess I'm up with finance and strategic planning. Thanks Ted for the excellent notes as usual. Is he still here?
Great, okay.
All right, we talked about four things last Tuesday, the 6th of June. The first one is that we had Mr. Kevin Markowski from the Booster Club show up to give us an update on what they do. And that was really extremely informative because they do many, many amazing things as we have certainly learned about here and there from Stephanie from time to time. So he confirmed that the Booster Club has in fact received a determination letter from the IRS confirming the club's status of a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, which can accept tax deductible donations. There was some confusion at first that they had erroneously been classified a private foundation. So that's why there was some delay in that paperwork. Kevin went on to describe their typical fundraising activities for all sports, including concessions and other games, 50/50, advertising from the Sports Guide and an annual golf tournament. He mentioned examples of the Booster Club's recent financial support for athletics, including a $30,000 contribution for the new sound system at Alumni Field, which is amazing. So thanks for that. And further details of what Kevin covered can certainly be found in the minutes from that meeting, which was added to our consent agenda at the beginning of this meeting. So then we went on to talk about, Ted gave us an excellent update on our, on the district's preliminary fiscal and financial results through the 11 months of this fiscal year. The current outlook anticipates that the total district expenses will actually close, will be close to the fiscal year 2023 budget of $61.6 million, which of course includes ESSER funding and probably be within 1% of that. So I think we're in pretty good shape on that. So although negotiated salary increases were higher than what was budgeted, our staffing levels having been lower makes up for that, is where we kind of see that. All kind of even out in the end. So categories of expenses that are above budget are generally due to higher inflation, including supplies, equipment and utilities. Bless you. And increases have been offset, certainly some of those increases have been offset by lower costs in other areas, including benefits, which were below budget, of course, with lower staffing levels. When final results are available, the business office will provide the Strategic Planning and Finance Committee with a more in-depth review of that. I think we are meeting again in September also. The third topic was the strategic plan, which of course will include three large in-person group meetings. We're continuing with Batel for Kids. And in those three large in-person group meetings, we'll identify and discuss our priority areas upon which our plan should and will focus. Beth Silveira from Batel for Kids will be our facilitator again. So I think those of you who worked on Port River Graduate know her well and know how adept she is at handling these large group meetings. Starting in August, the business office will send out communications again, meeting invites to people to attend those meetings. Again, community-wide, similar makeup as the Port River Graduate. We have three of those initial meetings planned for September, October and December. Okay? More on that to come, certainly when we meet again in August. Meeting when? The board meets again in August. We're not meeting again as a committee until September. The last topic we covered was the progress on the two ongoing audits. I think no one will be more excited to have them done than Ted. So we're, almost all the material for fiscal year 2021 has been completed. It's expected that this report will be certified and filed by the end of this month. And then the business office in Sullivan Powers also intend to complete the report for June of, excuse me, for fiscal year '22 by June 30, although the field work is still going on that. And again, our next scheduled meeting is September 5th at 6 o'clock. Any questions on that meeting? Okay. All right, thank you. Kevin, I think you're up.
Okay. The Policy Committee meeting, the Policy Committee had a meeting on June 7. We talked about a number of different policies that we had, we got input from several different folks on. We talked about Policy 5710, which has to do with our transportation program and students' right to access transportation and needs to, anyway. We, there were a bunch of legal questions, so we got some input from.
Mue.
What's his first? Bill Mue. There we go. Yeah, I'm sorry. You should remember that, right?
You're right.
So that's, we made some modifications to that based on Bill's input. Then we had, we discussed with Pam Reed, 5730, which has to do with transportation of students with disabilities. We dramatically changed it and then changed it back again. It was sort of a miracle meeting. Then we talked with Ted about 5770, which had to do with managing surplus and deficits at the Stafford Technical Center. We made only minor changes to that. We have at our next meeting, which is June 20. Does that sound right? Okay. At June 20, we will be talking about the state recently passed legislation having to do with school safety and access to buildings and things like that. I'm guessing that's going to be most of our time spent at the June 20 meeting. So if you're interested in that, come on down. That's all I have.
Great. I would, I would, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Rob. You're always on it. I love it. I would entertain a motion to approve the transportation program policy, the transportation of students with disabilities and financial management of surpluses and deficits at STC for first reading.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
No, I just had one comment. We also had a member of the public come with a communication, which we are going to keep in committee and continue that discussion.
Right. It's been on the agenda a couple of times. It probably won't come up for discussion until September.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that people know that it is still out there. And that's communication from the schools to the parents. One example is regarding emergency situations that occur at the school and how promptly are the parents notified.
Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Removed.
Should we discuss that? Should we do discussions?
First meeting all year with no executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?